Today again, I start working on writing just test cases for chat module. So I started. I started with create DM. So yeah, working on that writing test cases. Since this module is long, it will take. Complete like to complete chat model, I think it will take one week. Okay, and if there will be other tasks, I can also pick. Otherwise, I will continue this one.
Well, listen, I'll thank you all that. Jerry, how's it going?
Hey, um, good news is I got that new data loader working and deployed to QA. Uh, it's overall meant to be. A lot more efficient with how it handles the records and it also utilizes Redis. I ran some testing in QA. It looks really good. So uh, I don't see any issues pushing that out to production. It's mostly with um handling chat. And I I I I spot checked some cases where it would get called and. Ran the logs on the server and followed along and everything looks good. And this is for kind of catch you up. This is the data loader and this is so. All the cached data in the chat looks fine. How you were saying how Tori was removed from the group. And she was still showing in the members list. That would be a result of a stale data loader. This syncs it all back up and add some more efficiencies as well. It's like rather than. So the way our data loader used to work is anytime it needed to. Uh, change records, we would clear out the entire data loader. And that would cause us to refetch records. Or if anytime we needed to fetch more records, we would refetch all the records. It was very. Poorly optimized on how it fetched the records and caused more strain of what we needed on the database. Now it loads up everything incrementally. So there's a lot less stress going on the database when you use. I'm very optimistic about it.
Well, that's that's always good. When would it come into play? Like not just typical using a chat, more of adding or removing people?
No, no, it's it's anything in chat like, oh, oh, like when you load your lobby. When you're loading your lobby and you have one-on-one chats and when you're viewing like. The the chat uh met like the chat images, it's data like. Almost querying the data. So it it optimizes in the lobby and then on the get all message. It it's like little records like the person who created a chat message. So rather than having to query the database for every message to see who created the message, we keep that user in memory. So we quickly reference who created the message.
So it's it's much more universal.
Yeah, no topics like um topic data. That is all optimized and group members like when you load a group. Like the list of the members, that's all in cached in the data loader. Yeah, it's pretty much any of the big heavy lifting we have in chat and. Now instead of like completely wiping out our data loader cache when let's say if there's a group, a change in. The maggot army chat. Well, rather than wiping out the data loaders. For all the other groups, we're only selectively revalidating the data for that one group. Cause now our data loaders were like querying ten thousand groups when it had to revalidate. Now it's only going to query one.
Right, right.
Yeah, this is this huge optimization, huge centralization in it. And there was a lot of work and testing that. Had to be done, but I had time yesterday to push it through over the line.
Right. So you have it deployed in QA now?
It's in QA. Uh, I looked over it and I don't see any problem pushing it out to production. Uh, I can I can do a production deploy today. I didn't do it yesterday, but I can do it today because I had time to test the data loader. And we can go from there.
Okay, um, if if there was a problem, could you revert it? Okay, um, then um. Yeah, well, let's give it a minute. Let me um. More updates and we'll we can probably do that and test it out.
Yeah, did you um, did you give my information on the SMS campaign?
I saw that. Yep, I have some questions on that, but. I'll get back to on that in a minute too.
Okay, yeah, um, okay, I I really, I mean, if you have time, I know I've been putting it off, but. We gotta work on putting that chat admin in place.
Yeah, we can work on it today. Um, yeah, I'm fee like we're finished all the work, I guess, with the. New suggested lesson all of that, so we can work on it today.
I know, I keep saying I'm I was I was gonna do that for the past three or four days and I had to both of both of us have just been busy all week. I would really like, it's been on my mind, so.
Well, good. So today sounds like a good day for it. I I mean, did you get the um, did you ever look into the notification issue from a couple days ago?
Oh, no, I didn't resolve it. Yeah, I I know, like I know about the notification issue. That I started working on it. Let me, uh, do you remember which one exactly? It's like an.
Jerry, can you remember? There was a uh dynamic link.
Yes, for the joining group. Yeah, I remember it. Um, yeah, I still didn't fix it because I was trying to reduce it. The weird thing is like the deep link works fine for me. Like when I try to do it, just join the group for me, it it that it does joins the group. But when it's like from the notification, it does not. Even like it's the same because at the end it's just, it's the deep link what matters. Notification is just the way that which we we get the user to that deep link. So, yeah, I stopped there. Um, I can look into it today. Uh, if we finish the work with Jerry and I'll look into it on my own.
Is it, is it that you still it joins the group, you just don't link into the chat? Is that right? You're still joined, right?
No, for me was not. When I was like from from notification, nothing happens.
Because that because the landing page for the deep link is what actually brings you into the chat. It calls an patient that verifies that invite code. Getting to that landing page, so the invite code isn't validating.
Hmm, okay, I see. Okay, so you're looking into that one too, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, hey, John, I got one more thing before we kind of shift over to a mean. Um, so I worked with Chantel yesterday on something about books. And uh, she was wondering why some books weren't showing uh in the search. She gave me a couple of examples and like these were best seller books. And I checked Google Books and. The honest answer is Google Book sucks. I I searched for the book on Google Books like books dot google dot com. And the book that we were looking for was on the third page. So if if a book isn't showing, it's honestly probably because Google Books sucks, but. Rather than just stop there, uh, what we should probably do on those check-in searches is we should have like a a view more button. That gives you a list and probably add in some pagination for those queries that search. And then if you really want to find the book, you can go to view all and if you paginate it through. You'd find the book that you're looking for in this case on page like three or four.
So you're saying they had the book in their database, but even if you spelled the name of the book out, it wasn't in the first results?
It was on page.
The whole spelling of it?
Yes, Chantel can back me on this.
Were there a bunch of books named the same thing?
No, what it did is it pulled the other books from the same author. It was the weirdest thing. It pulled other, it pulled either like almost essays on the book. Or it pulled other books from the same author and like the the uh, one of the books was named uh hunt uh hunting Adeline. Or haunting Adeline, there was through like two related books. If you search for it, it's on page three. And he like it's it's a very easy name, hunting Adeline.
Right.
And it's on page three of books dot google dot com. And then there's.
It it was really crazy that it would be like six pages deep for like Daisy Jones and the Six, which was like. One of the number one books for like a year. So like they made a documentary of it, like these are top rated books. And if you spell it exactly the same. And include the author, no matter what you do, you can't find it in circles, which is so crazy to me.
Well, it's not just circles, it's Google Books.
Yeah, it's Google Books. And the crazy thing is, is if I Google it, it shows up in Google Books as like. The number one thing, but as soon as you click the books tab, it it's like sixty, three to sixty. Makes no sense at all to me. It showed some books and it's like, it's not even from the same author. It's like some old ancient book like. Some of these were like manuscripts, like not even modern day books were showing up first.
So what do you suggest there, Jerry?
Uh, we if if somebody really wants to find a book, we should add pagination to that list. Right now, it's only pulling the first page. Determined, we should be adding pagination to this.
Yeah. And we could do a ticket with them too. Is that possible?
I don't even, I I don't know how you could do a ticket with Google APIs, but.
What if they have like a, yeah, help desk or anything?
Yeah, and like there was even the Google hack of like when you put quotes around the name. The exact match, that didn't work either.
That's really weird. Yeah, they're not even using their own search engine.
Yeah.
The quotations did get us closer though, because adding the quotations at least got. The German version of the hunting Adeline book to show up as number three. And it wasn't even the English version, it was the German version.
Yeah, but then you use Google, like it use the Google search engine, it's number one. But then you go through Google Books on the books tab, it's something totally different.
That's really weird. Yeah, I mean, they're obviously not using their search engine. I wonder if they bought. Like a third-party company and just branded it Google Books at one point and just didn't really update or maintain anything. Yeah, but something like that. Um. Well, see if there is a way to do a ticket and maybe some of these more popular books we could. Could have move up. Um, but yeah, let's um. Maybe we could have Wells help us with the pagination.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you shoot him some info on that, Jerry?
Okay, yeah, I'll work with them.
Okay.
What? Oh, what's up?
I'm sorry, are we forced to use Google's API for some reason? I'm not sure. I was. Is Amazon? I mean, it used to be a bookstore. Does Amazon not have a good book API?
Well. What we have now is we have Google and that's what everything in our database is at this time. If we were to go through, I mean, I don't think it would be awful to do a migration. It would be. It would be definitely moderate to heavy workload, but I would say if you could match up the books on the ISBN. Maybe.
All right, well, it's just a thought. I'm not trying to change course.
We did, we did look at Amazon and a couple others first. I don't remember why we settled on Google Books. It was thought to be far more. Um, um, like a deeper volume with them. That's that's not remember it, but I barely remember that. But it would be interesting to. See like test, but we'd have to test with their API because as we know, if you search Google. It's different than searching group, the Google Book API. So like saying with Amazon, you search Amazon, you get a better result than if you search the Amazon API potentially, maybe.
Right.
So if we ever do make the change, we need like a sandbox with their API. Yeah, it's worth looking into, especially if this becomes a persisting problem. So. Chantel, just keep reporting if you do, if this happens like. A large percentage of the time, it probably would be worthwhile to explore other options.
Yeah, I um, I've had a couple people reach out to me about things like this that various issues with. Uh, book categories, um, like for instance, Ralph Ferguson had reached out that. Basically, like anytime he tried to go into the um, book category, he was getting a white screen. But then we did the fix because I was experiencing that too. Um, and then he said he wasn't having that problem. But then he was like, but every book I look for, it's not showing up.
Yikes. Yeah, okay, well. Maybe Wells, you could also look into the Amazon API and talk with Chantel and do test. Um, with their API, if I don't know how you'd set up in another project. And um, have Chantel give you some of the books that she knows for sure are problematic in the Google API and see if they show up. Like top of the list in Amazon search.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I think that's a smart idea.
Yeah, and then do a bunch of normal book searches too, like, because. That that was the thing we were worried about is that maybe they just didn't have enough books.
Yeah.
Can you walk me briefly on what needs to be done there?
Yeah, Sean Settle will uh give you some instructions.
Yeah.
I guess, chat, Slack, okay. Okay, cool. Um, all right, thanks guys. So let's go uh, go back, go back to a mean. So I mean, you were gonna look into the notification issue and then um, what else you got going on?
Yeah, it's gonna be the chat admin with um, Jerry.
Okay, and then yesterday, what did you do yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday finished working on the uh, that list there, like the pagination. For the new suggested uh, the suggestion list. Now with pageinate in all three screens. Also, there was these two issues. Uh, one in all board in SOT, like um, it should not see, now we should not be seeing added. Which um, like when you just like be there, if the if if there's like a a user. In the suggested list and also in the um, SOT, before it was like seeing added, but we did some changes. Now it will not be added. Also, there was like this sh- shift or um, yeah, it was like this um. Um, users appear and disappear in this SOT. Um, because we connect that with what's in the SOT in the edit SOT screen. So that was that shift there. So I fixed that as well. And also like the um, making the um, the keyboard dismiss after like clear and pressing the X on the input. So yeah. All of that was done.
As well, right?
Yeah.
There was another place that I need to swipe down. I forgot to mention it. Um, when you, I I believe when you view members in a group chat. You know, the that modal where you can view the list of members. Not only can you not swipe down, but the list of members doesn't scroll up high enough. Um, so where like the keyboard blocks them, let me double check real quick. I know I'm getting myself track a little bit, but I don't want to forget that. I don't know, it does slide down. Maybe after I type, let's try that. Well. Now it is working. Where was that? I'll have to keep. Looking.
Okay.
Because, yeah, there was. A list kind of hidden, maybe. No, I have, I've been in this build. This, we've got the same build for a little while. I don't know, I'll keep looking. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
So yeah, that, that was it.
Okay, so did that uh make it into PR yet?
Yeah, it was approved and merged.
Okay, excellent. So, um. I had a question too about um, testing it in QA. The first part of what you said was. What was the first, the first fix? It was?
It was the pagination.
Pagination, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we probably need QA build for this to test it. Um. There was another thing too, uh, I had a question, but I'll, it'll come back to me. Okay, so do you have any outstanding PRs or everything's already reviewed?
It's it's all that.
Okay, nice. Okay, uh, anything else? All right, cool. Thanks, me. All right, so it's Phil. Let's get your update.
Hi, uh, so yesterday I basically was looking into the bugs we talked about. Um, first one was the message sending twice. Uh, now I looked into our retry logic and it does in fact affect mutations. Uh, that was the only explanation I can come up with after looking into this. Is that the retry logic might have kicked in. Um, so they they might have had, I don't know, bad network connection or something of that nature, or maybe too too long or. Anyways, long story short, what I did is I added logic to say, hey, if this is a mutation, whether it fails or not, don't try again. Because with mutations, we don't want to try again automatically. Uh, and that's because it can lead to, you know. Some unintended uh behavior like we saw, uh, because mutations write to the database, right? We're fetching, you can call more than once because you're just getting that data. So with the mutation, you're setting data. So you don't want to set data twice. So I don't think it's good practice in general to retry automatically. Um, so.
Just to think pondering that. So what what's your solution?
Solution is I basically if it fails, it fails for mutations. If you want, if it didn't work, try it again, like upload the image again, send it again. Um, now if, you know, if you want to get fancy with it, hold states and stuff like that, we can't pursue in scenarios, but that's gonna take some. You know, it's gonna take some time and planning.
What's the um, situation if a user hits send on an image and then the city close the app?
It won't send it.
That's just how it's always been?
Yeah.
But in the case of this, the the two duplicates from yesterday that we were investigating. Those did send. So what 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 happened with that?
Uh, so again, we can't like where we tried to reproduce it unsuccessfully yesterday. Um, we spent some time after you left. It, we can't seem to reproduce it. We don't know what the exact conditions were. Um, but again, my theory was what's something I noticed in most scenarios is that the amplitude tracking did not actually. Uh, registered the send click when it duplicated. So that tells me maybe there was something wrong with the internet connection. Again, maybe, uh, and I was like, okay, if there's something wrong with the interconnection, that would trigger the retry logic. So therefore you would, the retry logic was would like it would queue the first one, then we queue it again. You might have two queued. And therefore caused the duplicate. This is again, this is me just trying to make sense out of what was happening. Um, there's this, did I, you know, did I get the problem on the, I don't know, because I can't reproduce it. Um, yeah, I investigate it as much as possible, but I do know that in general, we don't want retry on mutations. So I went ahead and added that logic and I think it's gonna help avoid this problem going down the road. I can't be a hundred percent sure until, you know, a month passes or a few weeks pass without us seeing any duplicates. And if we do see them, then back to kind of brainstorming why this might happen when trying to re-trigger it. It's just some, you know, some problems you can't re-trigger. They're kind of hard to debug, so you have to kind of go on.
I wonder if any of the stuff that Jerry just described, the refactoring he did. Could have any effect on on well on A, on what we were investigating yesterday or B, any stuff you're doing today.
Well, the thing he does was back end. This is, the this, the problem is here is that he, there was two requests sent from the front end. To that mutation.
Two requests?
Yes. And looking at the logic, the request is sent by hitting a button and you can't double click. I've like tried that. So the only other option is that it happened programmatically and I'm trying to see how can it happen programmatically. And I can't see up until now any other way other than the retry logic we have. So that's what, that's how I kind of ended up to that or drawn that conclusion.
Hmm, hmm.
So.
Yeah, okay. And you can amplitude said no send button clicks registered or just one was.
It didn't register any of them, the first or the second. Now, if it did register that, because like think about it, if you register the first, that means you have an internet connection, you're good to go. It won't retry. But if it didn't even register the first, it could mean there was a error with the internet connection, maybe. Because why did amplitude not report it, right? It's just a simple report.
Have you tried pressing the send button and background in the app as fast as you can and see?
It it's 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 because like the the report for amplitude is before you even make the API call. So it's not like it's waiting for you to finish. So it's instant.
If there's a connection, like, I mean.
If there's a connection, correct.
Yeah, because there could be, you could press send. You could have a dip in your connection a little bit. Background the app, then what happens?
Yeah, if you background the app, it'll be fine. It'll still register it, uh, as long as you don't fully close the app. Where if you do fully close the app, then you can't possibly have duplicates. Like that's not even an option anymore because all the JavaScript code is. It's got stopped.
Okay. Hmm.
So it's kind of, yeah, these problems have been recently are more tricky. They're like very uh, hard to reproduce. Uh, so with, yeah, uh, again, this is my theory. I don't know if anybody else has any other theories. I'm all ears. Um, if not, then we can go back to kind of testing it and see if it happens again. If it does, we'll kind of. Go back to, or else if we want to spend more time trying to reproduce it, I guess we can. I just. Uh, I just tried everything I can possibly think of yesterday, to be honest. Like if it was me and Jerry, we were trying all different scenarios, closing out, background it. Send a video, a long one, go to another chat, send something else.
The session replay, the u- the user appeared to just send one image as as normal.
They sent an image with a text and then they went to a different group. And then they started uploading something else.
So they sent the image with the text and then hit the lobby button?
Correct. Which we obviously tried multiple times. And they tried to upload something else and and they got that behavior.
And you tried that?
Yeah, it's the first thing we tried. We tried it multiple times. We tried the two images, two videos, you know, with text, without text, all of it.
In both cases, did the user send an image, go to lobby and then try and send another image in another chat?
Hmm, I don't know about case number two. Do you remember, Jerry? Was that the same scenario for case number two?
Which one?
For the duplicate image and chat.
Like did they back out of the app?
Yeah.
No, did they send an image, go to another chat and try and send another image?
I only think that was for one. No, I think that that was only one of the pieces. I don't think that's both.
Because I wonder if if that had something to do with it. Is that, what happened, what happens if I go, if I send an image and then send another image and another image, go another chat, send another image? I I would try that, just just like, do they start stacking up in a way that could be a problem?
Hmm. Good question. Let's see if I send multiple images in the same or multiple files in the same chat, what happens? Um, they should technically start stacking. Let me send a video first. Send, as that's sending one to another image. Send. Yeah, looks like they stacked. Uh, oh. I see a cache problem here.
Okay.
But. Oh wait, I see. Oh yeah, this is not good. I've never tested this before. Wait, I've sent these before. Never mind, we're fine. Yeah, so there is a cache problem, not a actual problem of sending the message. So that looks like it. Potentially. Showed the image twice. Um, but it's just a cache problem, like after I go back to logging back in.
Is maybe that's what happened to that user?
No, because they sent it in two different chats. But with that user, it wasn't a, it wasn't a um. It wasn't a cache problem. That message actually got sent twice. Uh, let me see what happened with this one. Oh, never mind, the cache is fine. I just got mixed up because I had sent the same message before. Never mind. Uh, no, it works fine. Uh, the order. A little bit because the photo sent first and then the video first is finished last. So the order just got, well, whatever sent first just kind of appeared first. Look, that's about it. But no, actually I take that back. No cache or order problem. So it worked fine, what I'm trying to say.
Okay, Chuck, maybe try it with two different chats now.
I did, and it works fine as well. I tried that multiple times yesterday where I.
I did, and it works fine as well. I tried that multiple times yesterday where I would start a video that takes a while, go to a different chat, upload an image. And. They both send.
So you're sure there wasn't, there wasn't any? Cash issue there?
No, no, that was just. I had sent the same image two times right before that one. So I was like, oh wait, why is it? And then I was like, oh, the date is different. It's. I sent those yesterday. I mean, you can try it on your phone right now, you know, and he can see what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, so I just kind of, like I said, after kind of spending some time on this, I just decided to go with the mutation approach to block it. Because I feel like we need to anyways. Um, and I feel like it might help with this. Uh, there's a good chance it will. But I can't be sure because I can't reproduce the problem until yeah, after reproducing it and now I can't reproduce it anymore. That's the only time I could tell you for sure worked.
Okay. Okay.
Well, so, you know.
Yeah.
Other than that, yeah, go ahead.
I was just saying, there's something, there's something happening. Feel like there's still something there that we just don't know yet.
There could be. Um, I mean, if anybody finds any patterns. A lot of QA team fans want some time trying to find a pattern there. I, that would be, you know, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll keep looking.
Um, because like anytime you guys can find patterns, that would help us a lot, because I can like be, okay, here's the pattern. And then I can be like, I can reproduce it and that's how I can test different theories if I can constantly reproduce it.
Yeah.
But if I can't reproduce it, that's it's like I said, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to go off theory, I mean.
For sure. Okay, well, we keep looking, so.
Other than that, though, I was looking into. Again, these bugs are annoying because I can't reproduce them. Same thing with that. Um, when you go to the compose screen and sometimes you find text there.
Yeah.
I also can't find a pattern, like it's frustrating. I tried everything. I tried doing it through, you know, friend connect, through compose, through a regular chat, through. Everything I can think of.
I I think it was start the convo.
We tried that, remember, we tried that live. Like I started a convo with you through friend connect and you. So.
Is it possible to that, um. It spanned across two versions, like maybe. It was lingering there from a prior version and then we updated.
Oh, oh, you know what, that's. That's a, that's a good point.
I just thought of that, because like maybe, maybe I'd sent, because I'd sent that message five days ago. Now that I think about it, maybe, maybe it's been fixed.
That's a good point, um.
But it was lingering.
Maybe, because it it does save on a device memory.
Right. Okay, well, I'll just see if it happens again.
Yeah, that's a valid point, actually. Um, but yeah, I I don't know, so. Until then, if you, if you if it happens again, and if you somehow catch on record, you find a pattern, that would be awesome. I'll go back and look into it until then I. I can't, I can't reproduce it, so I'm sure there's not much I can do. And, um, last thing I've been working on is the pagination. Um, so. I'm trying to understand how pagination works and. Uh, when I say pagination, I'm talking about chat. Well, actually, this will affect all paginations, but in particular when we. Paginate through, you know, through the flash list and you have that on end is called and so on. Uh, on end reached and where I was calling it multiple times, remember? So it would create chat duplicates. I had put in code to prevent, so when it does call it multiple times, it will check, hey, you know, this is, you're calling it more than once, let's not do anything. We'll just do it one time. So there's a code now that would prevent you from seeing um duplicates. But I mean, brought up a good point. He was like, okay, that's that's good and all, but what if we look at why it's even duplicating to begin with? Um, and that's what I've been kind of investigating. And. I'm looking at how we're implementing it. It's like we're doing everything using best practice here again. Everything is the way it should on and reaches. You know, it's a callback, it has all the proper optimizations, it's called in flash list. And we have a threshold, we have. Uh, you know, all the necessary, we have the right size, estimates, all that good stuff. Uh, a theory I keep getting online, renew versions of stuff is like, it's called like kind of like a momentum where. You're about to reach the end and then uh. Before you page it and you get the other data, it might trigger it twice.
I see, which you kind of do want it to start paginating before you get to the end, so it's like a little bit.
Well, that's not the problem. The problem is you want it to be like, we had it at seventy. So that means if if as like seventy means if only thirty, if you if you almost saw thirty percent of the content, it will start paginating.
I see. Is that for all feeds or just chat?
For now, it's just chat. So our recommendation was to, maybe that's, a lot of people think it's too early. Or like maybe move it down to like fifty, so with fifty percent, when you see fifty percent of the content that starts paginating.
I see.
Um, so that helped a little bit. It it made it. Uh, it it not, it made it duplicate less often, but again, it still didn't fix the problem. It's still duplicating, so. I, again, I looked, I looked, I looked and I guess, I mean, I don't know if you're hearing, but I guess flash list like. That's kind of flash this flash list logic. Because we don't have anything to read, like nothing else can call on and reach. Other than flash, this is the only one that has access to that function to call it. Um, and we're following this practice to do everything set up right. So a lot of people were saying, and I noticed that now after everything, if I scroll normally, it doesn't duplicate, only if I scroll like super fast. And that's where the momentum theory comes in.
Now, now, if I remember, though, it was actually duplicating when you scrolled slowly.
It did, but.
That was really weird. Because you would think if it was.
That's a good point, too. No, it actually wasn't. I I now I remember. There was a problem with. The on end reach was getting go twice on the first call.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the speed of the scroll?
Yeah, the the first one hadn't took to the speed.
Okay, okay.
The first, because and normally when you saw the duplicates, it was in the first sixteen messages, right?
Yeah, it was.
So yeah, that one I fixed. I I prevent, but that one didn't have to do with, that one had to do with this. That that one was out, was on us, which one, which I fixed. But now this, the other part, I think is due to momentum, like that, that's the best theory I've seen online so far. And after asking AI and everything. So. With momentum, I guess. Uh, so the the the, I think that's why it's happening. So I don't know if, I mean, or anybody else has any other theories, I would love to hear them. But that's what I came, that's the conclusion I came to. And a good way to kind of help with this is like a debounce. So that if it gets called twice, the debounce would prevent it from like if it's like, you know, four hundred milliseconds apart. You you, the user probably didn't scroll that fast, right? Like they didn't go through. Thirty messages in. Point two seconds or point three seconds.
Right.
So that the pounds is probably valid to help limit those. And obviously, even if it does duplicate, at the moment you won't see it because I handled it. But we wanted to prevent this from duplicating to begin with, which I think is not possible with. This momentum logic that lists to you, uh, that flash list has.
Did updating the library help at all?
No, this is more like flash list, I think is built off of flatlist, so I think it goes back to even flatlist before flash list. Um, I I don't know if they have any specific logic on, you know, they added any other logic. But what I do know is we are still getting the duplicates and we are following this pattern. Like I don't see any other way to improve the code we have. Like it's literally following.
We are still getting the duplicates? I haven't noticed.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, okay, so the duplicate call is happening, but I have logic to filter it. So it's like, so that it doesn't call it. I was trying to make it not duplicate to begin with, so that. But which I, which I mentioned, which I'm starting to think might not be possible because it's due to flash this logic. But we do have, we're we're handling that side effect properly. So even if it does, does it, if it does do it, we want to put the user.
There's no.
But we just wanted to go one level deeper and try to fix it, you know, from its roots.
Right. There's no performance issue with your solution?
No, no. Basically, what it does is, is hey, if we already fetched this, just don't do anything. You know, cancel it out, so the no performance issue.
Okay. Hmm, okay. Well, I wonder if the the new, um. The new scroll list library. Would handle that better, too?
Hmm, there's a possibility it might.
Yeah, guess we have to test. You also were looking into. If a message comes in the chat while you're scrolled in the chat, like not moving the.
Yeah, I remember that one, we uh, we said that flashless version two is gonna have, so there's a prop. That um, flatlist has, that's the react native list. And it's the one I shared with you. Let's see what it was called again, uh. It was called maintain visible con- uh, content position, so. And they literally say in the React Native documentation, it's like for something like chat, for example. So it's literally for our exact scenario. The thing is that's flat list is not supported in its current version. Um, and it's gonna support inversion too, but that's the one that I mean, was talking about yesterday, where if we want to update it, we have to update everything, like the React Native. Architecture and everything. Um, which will, you know, be a pain where he said that the new list. Um, that's what brought up the whole new list idea. Might sup- uh, well, I mean, said he will support this. I I looked at, I didn't read the docs about it yet, to be honest. I've been busy, but. Uh, you know, I think I mean, did his research, so uh, he said it will support it and that will fix that, this problem. Where if you get a new message, it moves it up a little bit.
Right, right, okay. Maybe it solves a lot of problems, but maybe introduces new ones.
Yeah, I mean, according to bum, I'm looking at it right now. Uh, like they're comparing flatlist with flash list with legend list. Uh, apparently performs even better than flash list. Uh, now, I didn't test this, I don't know. Uh, I know flashless is maybe a little bit more popular at the moment, but you know, that doesn't mean that legend list is not better. You can give it a shot and see.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is, it's more popular and been around longer, so it's had more testing and bug reports.
Yeah, it'll be a little, you you think it'll be a little bit more robust, but you know, uh, where the legend is kind of like the underdog. It might be better, but you, we have to do a lot of testing.
True. It it, we were talking about this a little bit yesterday, but it's something we could just test somewhere first, like discover feed.
Yeah, I mean, or we can just test it on, you know, multiple places and just have a QA build, like, you know what I mean? It's, it doesn't have to go in production. Like it could be a isolated branch just for the purpose of testing.
Yeah, I'd be really interested in seeing it. The scrolling on iOS has been just so bad since iOS eighteen.
This might help it, who knows?
Okay, um. Yeah, what's up, Shontel?
Hey, so, um, I'm coming across things that I haven't come across in a while. I got six friends to download circles this morning, so. I've been checking out the friend connect a little bit more. And one of the things that I noticed is if I go to the alert screen and I try to click on, uh, you convinced a friend to join. It won't do anything, so it's not setting off that friend uh, connection. But if another friend suggests a friend to me, then I can do the friend connect. But there are several people right now that I can't click on to do the friend connect with.
Interesting. And that's supposed to open automatically unless you don't have them in your contacts.
So they're not in my contacts, no, but they used my link.
I I see what it is, Shontel. I can work on that. I can fix it and make it clickable for you.
Right, thank you.
If they used her link, that should be even more valuable or at least equal to. If Shontel had them in their, in her contacts.
Um, yeah.
Because she straight invited them.
Yeah, I'm clicking on the alert that says you convinced a friend to join and it's not taking me anywhere.
Yeah, I, yeah, same, same for me.
I can work on that, it's easy.
Okay, that's, that's issue one. Um, issue two, Ismael, um. How do we, or maybe Jerry could help on this? How do we make that um, open automatically when she opens the app? You know, because we, if it's, if she's got them in their contact, in her contacts. And she opens the app, it'll start a friend connect. But it should be.
I think that would also be backend, because.
That's all backend.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing I'm, I'm a little iffy on with that is because these people aren't in my contacts. These aren't people I talk to every day. Um, they're more like acquaintances.
Campaign link, right? You didn't invite them from pink button.
Right, yeah, I didn't like go in and intentionally invite each person. I threw up an invite link on a post. And six people responded. So.
Okay, what about the notification? Does that open the friend connect?
Um, I didn't get to go through all of the notifications. I sort of accidentally cleared everything out.
Those those did work for me. When I got the, uh, you convinced a friend to join notification, I did click on those and it did take me through Frank.
But that was probably a direct invite, not necessarily campaign link, which is more of a.
I sent a link to a group chat out.
You did, okay.
And had a few people click on it to join.
And that started a friend connect if you tap the notification? Okay, good. Okay.
Yeah, because there's some people that like joined that I would love to connect with other people in the app, that they probably have no idea or in uh, but I know are in the app. Uh, but I can't go through that process to recommend them because the alert is not working, but Jerry's on it.
I'm on it, won't take long.
Okay. And um, you never tapped any of the notifications?
No, I didn't. I was just going in through the alerts.
Okay. Well. If you get another notification, test it. Todd said it works. I just want to double check it.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I just was looking at it, I was like, hey, if there's another way that I can go through that, like I want to be able to utilize it. So that these people can get the best experience.
It should be through the alerts.
For sure. Yeah, and I guess we won't start it automatically because the campaign link is.
Right, yeah.
Broad, yeah, okay. Okay. Let's see, so Ismael, do you want to uh? Do a test with the, um. The new list library?
Yeah, I can work on that. Um, I. Uh, let me see, I just want to see my to do list. Yeah, so it looks like after looking at all those problems, um. Again, with the pagination, the debounce with the logic that I had was the best I can come up with, it limits it. And the user shouldn't see it, so. Maybe, yeah, next step would be I can start looking at that new list and testing it out. Um, one thing is, uh. Before I do that, there there was the cards that needed to be factoring, if you remember. Um, because we had a share branch, remember where we refactored the share? We kind of put that on hold at the moment.
Yeah, that's true.
So. Did we want, did you want me to kind of refactor those cards first and finish that share? Before I start on this, since this is kind of experimental?
Well, you did refactor. Couple of the cards, right?
Not the cards, I refactored the share. Logic and the and how it looks, so I replaced it with buttons, if you remember.
Oh, yeah, yeah, um.
Yeah, but I didn't actually factor any of the cards. I can start on redoing that next and finishing up that share and having a PR for that, because that branches. Honestly, it's been a while since I've updated that branch, probably needs some bit of. Attention, but, um.
Okay, well, and we're gonna have Wells do a couple of the other cards, too.
Yeah. We are, but if you, I think you'll, which you can, if you want to, but I think if I do, it'll be a little faster since I already factored the first cards. I need to refactor the rest. And if you want us to do it, he can do that too, I uh, so, but it would be one of us that would do it, like either me or him.
Okay.
So I don't know how we want to move going forward. Do you want me to do it? Do you want us to do it?
I'm thinking, um, you know, maybe it'd be good for Wells because we want to add more cards and so it would probably be good for him to start. Getting familiar with the atomic design and. Integrating it. Um, because we may, we may have totally different kinds of cards.
Okay, um. That is a valid point, so if Wells, um. Basically, when you, whenever you're ready, we'll have just a quick work session. I want to tell you what branch to go off of. Because one of my branches has. Uh, that share. Header refactor. header refactor, so I want you to go off of that, so that when you build the cards, um you uh, you have that logic and you can finish it. Like you can just follow the same steps. And I'll go over our old cards and our new cards and kind of the difference between them.
Yeah, I'm totally done for that, it would be good uh if you would show me whenever you're able to, cause I have this other investigative work to do regarding Amazon API. But I'd like to to be up to date on what needs to be done on the cards, so I can start on them independently from like you having this vulnerability, so whenever you can just show me and then whenever I will, I will I will message you.
Yeah, let's aim after let's aim after standup. Sounds good. The one on one.
Cool, and the ones you did refactor Ismail, are those ready to test?
Um, I specifically, we've re- refactored the look of them.
Yeah, and the the three buttons, the three dots, uh they open up a drawer with different options, right?
And some of them, yeah, I did add some options to the other one, yeah, so it is ready to test, only problem is that it's like one card you'll have in one card you won't, so it would be a weird experience for the user.
Uh that's okay, I mean, it's still it would be the old experience for some of the cards.
And as, and it's still not complete, like there's still a lot of places that need to be implemented, like on podcasts and stuff like that, so but yeah, if you wanna test whatever I have, i- it is testable.
Okay, let's let's do that, why don't, why don't we get a build here early on? Because there's a lot that has been updated um between you and Amin and um, so I guess we probably should do a QA build for it. And then um if it, if it looks good, we maybe we can do another production build with it. Cause I I wouldn't really like to get the the updated stuff Amin did around the the um contacts that are suggested. There's a lot of suggestions around friend connects and stuff that will make a huge difference, especially for people that aren't allowing the permission. And I wa- I want that in like ASAP.
Yeah.
Are we gonna be safe, you think, though, with the cards you refactored? Merging that?
Um let me just double check, but I think it should be safe.
Okay. Okay, let's aim for that then, um, and then yeah, why don't um, you and Wells can go ahead and team up. I think we're pretty much good to go here. And covered all the bases. I've got some meetings this afternoon, but I'll be around, but um are you, are you ready to do a build this now?
Yeah, I just need to as I just said, that P, cause it's been uh over a week and a half, I haven't touched it, so I just need to update it with our latest code and fix any code conflicts and then have a P up or I mean to look at it, and then we can have a build.
Okay, okay, sounds good. And then um Chantel and Jerry, I'll I'll reach out to you guys about the um, the blue checkmark. SMS we're gonna do, um, had a couple more questions about it, but um
Okay.
Let me put that together and then I'll 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 slack you guys.
Sounds good. Um, I just have one other thing, so I've now done the friend connect with a couple people. And each time I'm getting random people who are duplicated.
Oh, do you have screenshots of that?
Yeah, I just put uh one in development and I just recorded another one, I think I may have caught that one. Which that one was very strange, because it suggested Emmy as a do you think Jesse knows Emmy? Um, but she's already friends with Emmy in the app, so I don't see why that would show her.
Yeah, let me know users that you're doing this for and screenshots and I'll I'll take a look at it.
Okay, yeah, and uh it was weird, cause I clicked on one saying Jesse knows Crystal. And then I noticed like at the kinda corner of my eye, it clicked another one below and it's two spots for Crystal and where it clicked it on one, it clicked it on the bu- on the other one. So
That I think you've seen before in QA, but this happened to you in production?
Yeah.
Yeah, record some more of these and definitely
This is the second one of that.
Okay, make sure you document it all, let Jerry know, and then do a couple more. And uh, go over it with a fine tooth comb, catch anything that looks out of the ordinary.
Yeah, the people are that are being suggested are quite bizarre, how they're getting suggested in any way, shape or form, like why is John Schumate at the top of my list to be suggesting to my friends out here, that makes no sense. Or like, my nephew who's not been in the app in forever, like why is he showing like old circles employees, I just, it's a very bizarre list. Which I'm sure there's more.
Yeah, I think it has a lot to do with shared contacts like mutuals and um and also you've been in the app a long time and followed so many people that you know, that
Well, it's for me to recommend to other people who are new in the app.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's the thing that's confusing, it's like my mutual contacts are more likely to be different than what's being displayed between me and the friends that they're already becoming friends with, like our mutual contacts would be within a very specific group.
Yeah.
And that's not who's being displayed.
Yeah, another thing to look at would be beyond the list of like ten that you get visually, Jerry can look at another another twenty or thirty or forty on that list and see if
Yeah.
If it's on that list, there's people that were be- be super obvious to you.
Yeah.
Trying to determine why are they so low on the list and
Yeah, I'd like to do that, cause like there's, there's people I have already have in circles that I want them to know that these new people are coming in and like I wanna connect them, but like I'm not getting a good experience with that option. Being able to connect these people.
And Jerry, we haven't changed that list for a long time, or have we?
I think we did something last week.
Did we?
Yeah. I was saying something about duplicated names.
Okay, but we, did we change the logic though, like around?
Um
Who would be selected?
I don't think.
I didn't think so either, but check on that.
Mm-hmm.
And then, yeah, will you investigate? With Chantel, see if you can, it might be, it might be worthwhile to create the system we've talked about before, where there is like a weighting you know, based on circle trust and different weighting fat ranking factors. We don't, we don't do that, right?
Hmm, no.
Okay, well, before we go into that, let's see if there is a good explanation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, alrighty then, um, I'll leave you guys to that, and then Ismail and Wells, sounds like you guys are gonna collaborate.
Yeah, we can, we can just stay here, Wells, if you want. If everybody else is leaving.
That works. Okay, sounds good then, um, I'll I'll be around, I got a meeting coming up here. But um, I'm available on Slack, and just let me know Ismail, when you have a a build ready for testing.
Yeah, I'll post it on development.
Great, alright, thanks, guys.
Bye.
Talk to you later.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, Wells, um, let me see, I'm just starting my screen. Hmm, okay, so first of all, um, let's look at our components, right? So you notice how we have card and cards? Now, cards, these are our are our old cards that we, we eventually wanna get rid of these. This whole folder is the goal, right? Hmm, are you with me, Wells?
Oh, yeah, I was talking to you, sorry, yeah, I see.
Yeah, so the goal is to re- this is the refactored component, and this is the old one. So the goal is we would just have basically one feed card. And it would determine kind of where to go, based off of the card type.
I see.
So instead of having a bunch of different colors, just have one feed card, and if it's a place, it would like map to this, now you just have to have more conditions, pay if it's game, then do the game card, you know what I mean? And you would have the cards listed here, and this would be the one that combines them all, basically.
I see.
Um just first, you know, make it a little simple, um now, let's see here. If I can find the Figma page for you. I don't know if we have molecules. Yeah, I think I have, yeah, so if you go to like molecules, um, you'll see that then it doesn't load. Uh, it's all on the whatever, um, so if you go here you'll see that these are the ki- different kinda headers we have. Uh, so we, we, we have a header component, um like I said, make sure you're not con- confusing old with new, and a good way to do this is uh, so first of all, let let me, let me explain what we currently have, currently, we we handle entertainment at place.
Okay.
Um, and with place with place card, it's a little tricky, because you can upload an image at a place, and if you do upload an image so you can see this is a place without an image, it just looks like this, right? Like without trusted image. And if you do upload a trusted image, it'll start looking a little different, more like let's see if anybody has uploaded, is it live? I guess not. No, no one. Okay, I guess not. Uh, so let me go ahead and upload it just a bit, so notice how this card looks, I'm just gonna upload it here in a minute here, since this is QA my favorite image. And let's see how it changed how the card looks.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So this is this is tre- a feed card with trusted image and this is without.
I see.
Yeah, so, and this only happens with it, so this logic is already handled, you don't have to worry about that, I'm just explaining to you what what's going on here. And then this, the one with like no trusted image, this is basically the place card, and it's basically the the place and the entertaining uh card, cause if you go here um oops if you go here um, well, I guess this goes for, yeah, game shows, all those different cards are handled here.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll see the hmm yeah, since all, all those guard groups, since they have like very similar logic. Like in terms of like, look, this is a TV show and this is a place. They're like eighty percent or ninety percent i- like identical, right?
Uh-huh.
Do you see, this is a place, this is a movie.
Yeah, yeah, familiar with that.
Because they're very identical, they're they're just grouped into one card. Now, if we go to now, so places, games and entertainment, you don't have to worry about, that's already refactored, this is what you have to worry about, for example, this is a podcast.
Mm-hmm.
So we want it to look the same as it does now, except with the new, with using the atoms and molecules and so on. So with the new code.
And be, and and where is the old card for podcasts, for example?
The old cards are under cards, so there's a file called cards, I, there's a file called cards with a S.
Uh-huh.
This is, we, you you don't wanna use anything from here, like the goal is to go click here and I say delete.
Uh-huh, I see, I see.
Yeah. So don't use, don't use this card header, use a new card header. If you go under molecules you'll find uh something called card header. You know what I mean? Uh, like, so don't use anything from here, don't, don't use any code from the old cards, make sure you're using all new components. And if, and if you're using the old header, see how this looks?
Mm-hmm.
The share, the old one, but if you're using the new one, it would look like this.
Oh, way cooler.
So that's kind of a clue, you're using the right. And the new one should work automatically with podcasts after you implemented.
You already implemented the, the, the atoms and the molecules, right?
Like most of them, there might be a few, maybe like, for example, the square, I don't think we have this yet. And then this molecule, this whole thing is a molecule, right?
Mm-hmm.
You with, this is not implemented, you you'd have to create this molecule.
I see.
And this whole thing is a organism, so you also have to put that under cards, like you, like you would probably have a a feed card, or not feed card, you probably under here, you'd have podcasts and then probably books, and then those will both go inside the feed card, under different if conditions.
I see.
Yeah.
And are we um refactoring what's already there and 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 aiming for having it uh exactly as it looks, but in a new architecture, of course, going
Yeah, and this one, if you can see, it's going off the screen, so
Uh-huh.
Honestly, if it's using best, if it's using bad practice, if you can improve off of it with keeping a look at the same, for example, this is going off the screen, so if you can fix this orientation, make it skit like I wanna recommend copy paste the code, I would recommend looking at it and trying to recreate it with better practice if we can.
Indeed, yeah, that's what I was going to ask, so we want to actually make some improvements in there. And is there something new that we have to get from Figma to there, or?
Um, well, you can, you always use Figma as a reference, like if you don't know the font size, like for example, here's Figma, right, for the podcast.
Uh-huh.
So you can use, hey, you can be like, hey, what's this font size, like what font families are you using, you can click here and it should tell you, oh, it's body one, bold, so so this one's bold, what, why do I'm bold, this one is, you know, well, this one's already implemented, you can just reuse this, for example, right, cause I have it in my other cards. And that's, and that's the nice thing about these atoms and molecules, a lot of them are reusable, but for example the only thing in this card that you have to create is probably this part right here, this molecule.
I see.
But this is already created, right, as a molecule, you can use it, this is already there, the SVG, and it functions, so you just have to add it, right? Um, same thing for books, this is gonna be there, you just gotta recreate this part of it, and just create it, I put it under a new card. Since these don't look exactly alike, when you have different logic.
Yeah, they have a
Nothing crazy, really, just uh you know what I mean, and make sure they're using the new header, which again, already exists. You just have to re, you just have to use it, basically, just add it, like just, so this is the, you know, you, like this is the bottom part, which is already there. Category is already there, a lot of this stuff is already there.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, and you have to make sure you were covering all the headers. Um I know we have favorite on favorite check and so there might be a few headers we don't, I think we, I think we haven't covered for now, so yeah, the goal is to, for now, focus on feed uh home and like the feedback on home and it, and then and what's it called, the discovery, after you have those done, create a PR, we'll get that in, and then maybe you'll move over to shares. And in here, what you're gonna be doing is right now choosing the old cards, so you're gonna be sw- switching the old cards to use the new cards, which the code is already there, but you might have to add uh different header, um uh icons and stuff like that, so that'll be part two, so you don't have to worry about that, now just worry about home, this, and so, because they are exactly the same.
Okay. Yeah, it's all good, th- this is a good sign of a really well-done atomic design.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. We did a lot of work on this, me, Chantel, and the whole team. So, yeah, again, it's probably can still use some improvement, so anything you can improve on, please don't hesitate to like reach out, say, hey, I don't like this, and let's do this, like we're always open to new ideas here, right?
Yeah, awesome, yeah.
Cool, uh, well, if there's nothing else, that's that's pretty much all I wanted to share.
Okay, um, can you please send me the Figma design?
Yeah, sure.
And also the branch that you mentioned.
Uh, I, we're, I mean, it's gonna review it, so it's gonna be inside uh, what's it called, it's gonna be inside uh dev soon. So I'll ping you as soon as Amin approves it, and we have it in dev, you can just go off of that.
Yeah, awesome.
Cause John said he wants it as part of the build.
Cool, cool. Yeah, and I I'll also not start working it right away, cause I have other stuff to do, but as soon as I start working it, that will open you, letting you know.
Sure.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you for for introducing you to this, man.
Yeah, no worries. Happy to help. Talk to you soon.